It's nine o'clock. We'll go over here and call a meeting in order this morning. And if y'all would bow your heads for the prayer. Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. Guide this board as we come here to take care of the county's business, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Y'all will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I bring this down to amendments to the agenda. I do not have any. Mr. Morris?
I have any.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
Mr. Ross?
None.
Mr. Bossard?
None.
Mr. Eldredge, is there any for?
Yes, we need to remove item F under the chancery clerk. And then we also need to add spreading on the minutes, the cash balance by fund for August. And I passed a copy of that out.
Yeah, all?
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Fulton is not here.
I do have one.
Go ahead.
Just item D under the Board of Supervisors. We just are changing out the letter. The title of the project in the letter was needed to be corrected.
Okay. Is that all we have?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Mr. Comer?
None.
I know there's one or two others. Go ahead, Marcus.
I need to amend the agenda to add a hearing for 10 o'clock. And this is an appeal, it was only an appeal hearing. And it was on the consent agenda for August 18th and separate today. You just didn't make the agenda today. And all the legal matters are timed as an hour and a quarter to.
Okay, okay. Don't let me forget it, Marcus. Don't let me pass it by.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I need to amend item A and item H under my. Item A is just a date correction. And item H is a time extension for the surf grant project.
All right, thank you, Sonya. Are there any others? Anybody else need to amend? No, I accept a motion to approve the amendments.
No move.
Have a motion by Mr. Morris. I'll second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, that brings us down to general public comments. Anyone here for general public comments this morning? Okay. That brings us down.
Oh, I didn't see.
I'm sorry, come on up, please, sir. Just come to the microphone right here. And just give us your name and your address, please, sir.
James Kelly, 9236 Orange Lake Road.
Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
I live in Orange Grove. We have the worst one mile road in Jackson County out there. One mile. To you.
Oh, I know. I know where it's at.
Yeah, I know, but you ain't done nothing with it.
No, I've been blacktopping roads out there for you, and you know that.
Two years ago, I called you to see about fixing it. You said you would, you'd take care of it.
We did get it taken care of. We just didn't get it all the way through.
Well, why didn't you get the rest of it?
Cost a lot of money.
Run out of money.
No, I said it cost a lot of money. We'll get the rest of it one day, but it's just not going to happen right now.
Well, you told me last week when I called you that you wasn't going to do anything to it.
That wasn't on the list. That wasn't. But we'll get it on the list. Joe's sitting here.
It's been two years and it ain't on the list.
That was, the rest of it's not. The first part was, the other part's not.
Well, I know where the first part is, where you done it.
Yeah.
You done a good job.
That's right.
But you ain't done nothing out there on that one mile. Worst in Jackson County, I guarantee you.
No, it wouldn't be the worst.
No, it is the worst.
All right, but anyway, we'll get it on the list. Joe's writing it down now.
You're going to take care of it?
Yes, sir. Joe's making notes on it now.
Okay. I'm looking for it.
I know.
I've called you a dozen times at least. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for general public comment? All right, that brings us down to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to pass it as amended? Have a motion by Mr. Taylor. I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Brings us down to department heads. Yours is at ten, right? Marcus?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Finance, Ms. Wells?
Good morning. The first item I have is the order approving the claims docket.
Approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Morris, a second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Okay. Second item I have is the resolution authorizing the inter fund loans for fiscal year September 30th of 2025.
I'm going to. Have a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Bossard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And the last item I have is the resolution authorizing operating transfers for fiscal year September 30th of 2025.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Earl, come on up.
Morning, folks.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, I know that we've been discussing the volunteer contracts. And I just wanted to see if the board's position was still the same. Just go with one volunteer department contract with to cover the county. Start January 1. I want to see if your position has changed or not before we move forward.
I think I'm good for it. I'm good, yeah.
We're going to add three full-time firemen on the west side and three full-time firemen on the east side.
That's in, that's in the budget. That's budgeted in October.
Out of doing away with this contract, we're going to be able to.
Now, if we do do away with the contract, there's three separate people.
Right.
It has nothing to do with the six you're talking about. And on January, I'll come back to the board and say, you know, we got the money left over. We need to hire three for the west side.
That's what I want to make sure of.
I'm not going to forget you. I'm not going to forget you. There is one question, though. The next contract payment for the volunteer departments, we typically do them in November. It's a $50,000 payment. Since their contract on the east side, west side, will end December 31st. Do y'all want to pay them the $50,000 in November for one month or not?
It's something we normally do, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Does the contract provide orders?
The, what, the contract has no set amount and no set time period. That's just how we've done it for years. However, the contract does provide that in the event that the contract's terminated or ends, that all county funds would revert back to the county.
Right, right.
Y'all work on that.
I mean, far as I'm concerned, we could do the money then.
That's right.
Just tell them we want it back. But I just.
I've got one issue. I've heard that very recently that part of the issue, or most of the issue that we have is employed fire personnel are really not allowed, when they're not on duty, to go volunteer to fight a fire.
That is, that is correct.
And I've heard, I've heard that no one else has that, and that is a terrible constraint.
Well, several years ago, several years ago, legal and HR met with us. And what everything was based on was the county, board supervisors, y'all responsible for fire protection in the unincorporated area of the county, with the exception of Guff Park Estate, San Andrews Fire Protection District, which is a separate organization. We get the village that provides for our funds. That funds pays for our guys' salaries, fire equipment, fire stations, of repairs, upkeep. And it also provides for the contract payments to the volunteer departments. There was some concern, both legal and HR, that our people volunteering to do a job that they're getting paid for, and everybody's being paid for without county funds, that we were looking at probably a problem with the Department of Labor wages. Our employees could come back on us and say, hey, you're letting me volunteer to do a job that you were paying me, that you pay me to do. And legal at the time said they didn't think that was a good policy to have. And then there was also concern if our guys got injured fighting a fire as a volunteer in the county, that the insurance, because I have to carry a separate policy for the volunteers, our city, our county insurance wasn't covered them as a full-time employee because they're volunteering. So that's why the county elected to do what they did several years ago.
But if you call them out, you pay them.
We pay them. We pay them.
So he, he'll, he'll call out full-time firemen that are off? And if they respond, they get paid?
Yeah, we get paid. Yeah, we pay them. We don't, we don't tell them they can't come.
Right.
But if we need them, we get them. We pay them.
What I'm hearing is that, that in order for them to get permission to go, they've got to go to you.
No, sir.
And you are saying, no, do not go.
No, no, that is incorrect.
I think that's an issue that I would like to delay some of this discussion until we can resolve that. I understand that it is, it doesn't apply anywhere else. And even people in Jackson have said they don't know what that's all about. So certainly, it's got to have been addressed from any federal law or state law by now, I would think. So I, I would ask that we run that down and resolve it.
I mean, kind of, I would like to see if a, if a full-time employee wants to volunteer and they really do want to do it without pay, I would like for them to have an avenue to do it. But I don't want them to feel like they have to, or that we're pushing them to, or that there's any requirement to, solely if they want to. And if there's a way to do that legally, then I think that's a good thing. But I don't think we, I don't think we in any kind of way can say, hey, we even encourage you to do it, because it seems to me maybe trying to circumvent Department of Labor overtime laws.
I sure don't want to get in trouble with the Department of Labor.
But if someone really wants to volunteer, I wish there was a way that they could.
Well, Jimmy and I, we can ask or.
I remember that's come up recently, hasn't it?
No, it was back, Gary was attorney, it was Gary and Janet. That's how far back.
Melissa and Tristan and my officer, both of labor attorneys, and probably can come up with an answer on whether or not that's advisable. I understand the theory, kind of from a high level. I haven't peeled back the layers of that onion, but I understand at least the argument. Maybe Melissa and Tristan can talk and come up with a recommendation on whether it's advisable to do that or not. I know, I understand the insurance issue as well. Somebody gets hurt, gets hurt, gets hurt badly, let's just say. Do you have an insurance issue, a worker's comp issue? If they're volunteering, but they work for.
The county.
Right.
So if you want us to kind of delve into that, those kind of two issues on somebody volunteering that works for the county, we'd be glad to do that.
Melissa, are you aware of any of it?
I wasn't aware of this. This is before my time. I will say generally, what Earl's saying is true. Haven't looked, done research for firemen to see if there's an exception. Because I know there's different rules for you guys. But generally, you can't have an employee who works the time for you volunteer in that same role that they work for you in. It's, you know, to prevent that, just that, trying to get around paying them. So that is a general rule for the Department of Labor. I would have to research to see if there's any kind of exception. I'm assuming someone's already done that research.
I've never seen, yeah, they, I think Janet and Gary did it, but.
But I'm happy to look into it and see if there's some way to, you know, we can work around it.
It could be one of those situations where others are doing it. Well, nothing's happened yet. And.
Well, a lot of places that's doing it, it's city firefighters volunteering out in the county. So it's two separate governmental entities. And that's another thing. We're one of only a few counties that have paid firefighters. So, you know, we'll do whatever y'all tell us to do. But I don't want to get y'all in trouble either.
We need to let them look into it, Melissa and Tristan. Just see what they can come up with. But I think the rest of what you're talking about, we're all good with, you know.
And.
Parts of contracts.
My main concern with what's going on right now is that with all the growth that's happening on Mallett Road, you got, you know, apartment complexes being built. My worst fear happened last weekend, or weekend before last, in St. Martin, when a third-story apartment caught on fire, one of those apartment buildings. And we had one volunteer show up. And you had more paid firemen there than you had volunteers. All right, so.
Yeah, we had a lot more than just one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what scares me is, is that when the commercial growth starts happening on Mallett Road, and we're going to depend on one volunteer, or two, or three, whatever. You might have 30 people on a roster. But if we only have an average of one or two that come out, nothing against those guys. Look, I, I used to be a volunteer. My first two years at the sheriff's office, I was a volunteer. So what I'm saying is, is that with the growth that this county's experiencing, we've got to get serious, especially in the areas of growth. We've got to get serious about getting the fire protection caught up. We've got, we've got the sheriff's office caught up. We've got our deputies increased in that area. So now we've got to work on this other part of public safety, which is fire. And, and so I, I know it's going to hurt. It's new. It's something that nobody else really does. But in the long run, if we don't stay on top of it, we'll never catch up with it.
Right.
And that's what scares me.
I don't want anybody to think that we're doing away with the volunteers. We're just going to one department instead of two. Anybody that's volunteering now on the west side still want to volunteer? They can still volunteer.
Yeah.
We're not taking that away from anybody. But if we're going to spend the money, it needs to be spent wisely. And to answer your question, Mr. Taylor, about people coming in, they don't have, they don't ask my permission. We can, we'll either call people in if it's a big fire and we know we need to call people in. The guys take their radios home with them. And if they know we got a fire going on, because we got an app on our phones and everybody gets the fire calls, they can pick up their radio and the officer in charge can tell them to come in or not come in if they don't need them. So there's, nobody calling me to ask me if they can come in. And that's, that's not an issue.
Okay.
For that fire, though, did some volunteers show up at the station?
No, sir.
So there weren't any volunteers that showed up and they were just said, okay, we're good?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. We just handled it ourselves with the belt and who's a paid employee for the volunteers. He's the one that was there.
So I would say moving forward, volunteers are something that we need. We need to continue to make sure that they feel comfortable and included and involved. We need to do what it takes to make sure they feel that way.
They, on the east side, they're that way. There's just always been a disconnect for whatever reason on the west side. And I'm not really sure why.
And that's why I mentioned this time last year during budget time, I would love to figure out a way to pay volunteers to respond. You know, if we, if we had to go to that direction, I don't have a problem with paying volunteers to show up, because at least it gives them an incentive to show up if they, if they can.
You can do a, you can do a paid-on call, $10 a call or something like that, depending on what kind of call it is. And they get that, normally at places that do that, do it quarterly. You answered up and you actually came, not just sat at your house and answered radio on Orange Beach in Florida and said you were coming. But, you know, you actually show up. It's all verified. It's all in the reports and everything. And then we, you know, we turn that in so y'all can cut them a check. I mean, we could do something like that.
I don't want to do without, I don't want to dismiss volunteers. I want, I want as many volunteers as we can get. But at the same time, if, if, if our records show that are not enough or, or responding, then we've got to take action to make sure we have the paid staff that can respond. Because we don't need to be trying to catch up. That's my only issue here is, is that if we don't try to stay on top of this, then it's like everything else, we're always going to be trying to catch up.
The complexion of the county on the, on the west side's totally changing.
It's totally.
It's becoming urbanized.
Yep.
So, all right, so anyway, so we'll just go with the one department. January 1. Jimmy's staff has looked at the contract. They made some changes to it, just minor changes. We'll get that issued out, get it back to y'all, get it back to Jimmy so that y'all can approve it. And we'll go from there.
Something, I, I've had a call and I've verified, but it may be a rumor that we need to make sure is addressed, because there was something saying that grading districts are impacted when you change that.
No, sir.
This is administrative change.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the grading. Grading districts look at your fire trucks. They look at the state, where your station locations are. And they're looking at people responding. If the volunteers aren't responding, and we add more firemen, yeah, you're going to impact the grading district in a positive way and not a negative way, because you've got people showing up.
And one other thing we're able to do in this next budget is there's a fire station on Jim Ramsey-Joe Batte Road in the North Van Cleve, North Latimer area that's been moth, that was mothballed 10 years ago because of lack of volunteers. Now we're in the process of putting that fire station back online with paid firemen. So we'll have paid firemen in that.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
From the savings.
We're redoing the station right now.
Yeah, we're redoing the station right now to make it accommodate. For full-time firemen that that station's never had in 10-plus years, it's been vacant for 10, 10-plus years. So now we're going to get ahead of this thing and we're going to have paid firemen in that area. As it grows, we'll grow with it, instead of trying to catch up to it.
The contractors are supposed to be through with their upgrades to that station in November. But I told Randy, you know how contractors are.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but they're saying November.
Yeah.
Next year.
Well, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. But we've got, we've got it in the budget to hire the people. We're going to go ahead and hire them and have them ready to go. So when they're done with that station, we'll put the people in there. People on the Tarasina Road station, we're hiring them in October. And that station will be fully manned.
Okay.
We're good.
So that'll be done.
Very good.
Anything else, folks?
Thank you. Well, it is the issue with having paid firemen attend and fight a fire. Pay or not pay, they're volunteering. But I think I heard a little earlier, if you paid them something, or even allowed them to go as volunteers, they would go and fight the fire with the understanding that they had no claim against the government.
Well, that's something.
And that's been documented.
That's something Melissa said she was going to have to look into.
So is it, is it possible to pay them, I think I heard Randy say, a reduced amount?
I don't think we're going to be able to do that. That's a Melissa question.
So accept the fact that they're volunteer, but paid.
I'll need to look into that. I really don't want an answer right now. But I'll be glad to try to see if there's a way to do that.
I think it'd get complicated, because how do they say that I don't feel pressured to volunteer? I mean, it's going to be hard. I can understand that's a hard one to do.
That's what, that's what we got attorneys for. I just, I just show up and go, whatever. All right, folks, anything else?
Town's good.
Very good. All right.
Thanks, Earl. Mr. Comer, do you have something?
Yes, sir. Mr. Comer, I need to, I, I was out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and I forgot to amend the agenda to add an issue. It's a cleanup matter. If I could get someone to approve the amendment of the agenda to deal with the tax protest appeals that we handled last meeting. And then I'll tell you what the issue is.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion by myself, a second by Mr. Bossard. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
If you all think, if you remember, we, the board heard a tax protest appeal from one entity. There were about five other entities on the agenda that were protesting their taxes as well. Those were withdrawn, and the board never heard those. And just to clean up the minutes and make sure that we're all clear, I prepared an order with regard to those other entities that were protesting their, their taxes that withdrew their appeals, I prepared an order declaring those appeals that were listed as moved. So I've got an order of the board supervisors of Jackson County declaring move certain tax protest appeals. And there's one, two, three, four, five different parcels of property. Just to make sure that our minutes are clear and clean as to the fact that those were withdrawn, and the boards are clearing those moves.
Okay, okay.
So I can just get a motion.
Motion.
Go approve this order.
I'll make that motion.
We've got a motion by Mr. Bossard. I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Can I clean it up?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Uh, Sonya, you didn't, yours went on a consent.
Yes, sir.
All right. It brings us down to supervisor items. I don't, didn't have any.
I don't have any.
Mr. Morris. Mr. Taylor, I believe you have a couple.
Yes, sir, I do. I have two things. First one is a resolution accepting the resignation of Ryan Fulton, the Jackson County Airport Authority. I make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Okay, thank you. The second one is a resolution appointing Walter Perez to the Jackson County Airport Authority Commission. That motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Bossard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Mr. Ross, I believe you have one.
I've just got a, a motion to reappoint Curtis Spears with West Jackson County Utility District.
Okay. And I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Mr. Bossard, you did?
Yeah, I do have two, two comments I'd like to make. Number one, it's official today. Beachview Drive, first phase is now open. Woo-hoo, all right. Uh, first phase is open. And I think they were a little bit ahead of schedule, wasn't they, Joe? Yeah, I think they were a couple of weeks ahead of schedule getting it complete and getting it open. So the same contractor will start Phase Two once his materials finished getting delivered, he'll start Phase Two. In the meantime, we're going to pave some of the side streets that, that everybody's been using to get around the construction zone. We're going to pave some of those streets within the next couple, three weeks. And try to make the detours a little more passable anyway. Number two is, I think I mentioned something last meeting about the utility authority. And Great River was able to work out, as of last week, they officially signed a contract for Great River Utility in the Guff Park Estate, San Andrews Ocean Beach area to purchase water, wholesale water from the utility authority, which now there's, the water quality, water pressure, all that should be cleaned up in that area, probably within the next six to nine months, is what the director of the utility authority told me last week once they signed the contract. Said it's going to take about six to nine months to make the net. They got four connections, connection points they have to make. And so to get the water, the wholesale water into their Great River Utility System. So, so hopefully, this time next year, they'll be getting clean water and better pressure. And, and so hopefully, that's been taken care of. So that's a project that I've been working on along with some others throughout the community, have been working on for the last two years. The Public Service Commissioner asked me last year, he says, "So what do you want me to do?" I said, "Force them to buy water from the utility authority and we'll have, we won't have an issue." So Public Service Commissioner, a few residents in the area, and, uh, and myself have been working on this, and, and I think we've come to the fruition of it. So next six to nine months, hopefully all the waters, most of the water, I ain't going to say all of it, but most of it will be taken care of in that area. I'm not responsible for the bill, so, you know, whatever, whatever the bill, I'm a customer of theirs too, so I don't, I don't want my bill to go up either. So, but I think they've got an agreement in place with the Public Service Commissioner that the bill has to stay a certain rate till 2027, I think, and then the Public Service Commissioner will reevaluate their, their rates. So, uh, anyway, that's the two things I've got, and I want to thank everybody that was involved in making all this happen. Jeff, thanks for your help on Beachview. Hopefully phase two will go just as smooth. There you go. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, I just found Mr. Walter Perez, are you here? Stand up, Mr. Perez.
There he is.
How you doing? It's Mr. Perez. Kim, just before you get there, put it...
Yeah, I wanted to mention that, and we got, got overtaken there.
Yeah, my fault, go ahead.
Walter, we call him Walt, has an awesome background with Chevron, and he's going to be a great addition to volunteerism in the county, and thank you for agreeing to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate the board's confidence, and let's not let you do that back.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Walter.
Yeah. That brings us down to closed session. Uh, I think we'll just take a break for a little bit, and we'll come back at 10 o'clock for the planning commission appeal, okay? We'll see y'all at 10.
Okay, on July the sixteenth, the Planning Commission heard the application RZON-06 2025-00083. And this was a zone change from C1 Community Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant was Bobby Heinrich and the owner of the property is RBD Development. The property is three point two two acres in size and it's not located in a flood zone. The property is an entrance to the Azalea Oaks subdivision that was previously approved and rezoned to R1, and I'll show you that here on the map in just a second. Of course, the construction of this subdivision has not yet been started. And the changing, doing this zone change would allow them seven more, seven plus more lots to build on. And of course, the criteria for a zone change is a change in the character of the neighborhood to warrant a zone change and is there a public need or was there a mistake in the original zoning? And of course, the Planning Commission felt that there was not a change in the character of the neighborhood, so they voted unanimously to deny this application. And Bobby is here to present his appeal. And I'll pull the map up for you, show you exactly where this is. Okay, now R1, it was a previously approved Azalea Oaks subdivision. And do you need to flash it up?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Just give me a second here, folks, then we get my stuff in order here. Okay, good morning. My name is Bobby Heinrich, 1806 23rd Avenue in Guffport. And so back in July, as Marcus was saying, I made the presentation for this development. The owner owns the front part of this property and the back part when he bought it. Again, it was rezoned to R1 for a hundred and three light residential subdivision. At the time, it was thought it'd be a good idea to leave the front commercial to have some commercial components up there and feed back through to the subdivision. But after talking with the potential builder here with the C2 zoning and what's allowed in a C2 zoning would not be appealing to drive-through to get back to the subdivision. So after discussing this, the owner and the builder, I was asked to make a request to have that rezoned to R1 as well for a couple of reasons. And it's marketing and mainly the marketing and then the entrance of the subdivision would have to be put back off the beaten path, so to speak, you know, in order for people to find the subdivision. So I kind of want to back up a little bit, kind of give you a little bit of history of the development. So all this whole piece right here, this is Highway 57, the subject properties are right here. We're already have been approved to bring our entrance in through the commercial part right here to feed back to a hundred and three lots right here. This is a subdivision. So what we're proposing is that front entrance right there, you come off of Highway 57, here's your drive going to the backs, and I've got seven lots right here. And these are larger lots. These are about ninety feet wide, so they're larger than what was previously approved. And the owner and the builder feel like, you know, a nice entryway, monumentation, and going through residential homes would be more appealing than say something that's up in the air of what you could build on these commercial lots. It could be a strip center, liquor stores. I mean, C2 allows a lot of things to be built on it. So I always try to do my homework. I talk with planning. It didn't seem like it would be that big of an issue of this. So I get up there, this was back in July, and I made, I started my presentation. And I don't know if you've read the minutes of this meeting, but it led right into what was done. They did start the clearing out on this property. And rather than getting into all the reasons why, but there were several oak trees out on this property and they were cut. Not all of them were cut, but some of them were cut because it just didn't fit into the subdivision. So right off the bat, I was kind of grilled on, well, y'all cut them trees and, you know, it's just not, you know, that was a horrible thing to do and all this, and had nothing to do with what my request was here. So rather than reading all the, I do want to read a few things. I'm just going to go down the minutes here. I did my presentation and one of the, I don't want to, it's all in here, so I guess I can say the names. Mr. Brewer, okay, I live in this area and I got a problem to what happened to that subdivision. You know, it pertained to cutting the trees. And although people weren't against this subdivision, I just think that it was bad business to cut these trees. Well, if you want me to explain why some of the trees were done, this is a dirt pit. The very back end of this property was a dirt pit. We have to, we had to design to take the front of this property and we're going to be pushing dirt down into this low area to balance it out. It's not going to balance it out, it's just going to be a straight downhill run. Because when you get to about halfway into this property, right along in here, it makes about a twenty-foot drop-off because back in here is where the dirt pit was. So we're taking this dirt and we're shaving it and pushing it to blend all this out and level it out. That's the idea. So that was the reason, and again, we're not cutting all the, we didn't cut all the trees. In fact, the entrance into the previous owner's property right there, we have a paved driveway going into his property there, and those oak trees are right there. So that was the first comment that I was approached with about the, after my presentation. Number three, let's see. Cutting trees is just not good business. Number four here, I've got these noted here. I'm sorry, just give me a second here. I want to jump down a few comments here. I don't want to get into all these, all the minutes here. It just got to a point where I felt like I was, I wasn't able to explain what I was trying to do here. And I'd like to explain it to y'all. But even Mr. Ketchout here, he even tried to tell the Planning Commission, let's stay on track here, what we're really looking at. You know, there's not a tree ordinance in Jackson County, so that really, you know, shouldn't even be brought up. What we're talking about is our change of character and, you know, is there a need for this development here? And I'll go ahead and throw in here, I think it was a mistake, you know, to run commercial down that far. There's no, I think there's a park store just north of us, but I did, in the packet there, I wrote on here where the commercial right there, it's vacant or it has a house on it. So there's no commercial buildings in front of this property here. And I wrote on there, a V being vacant or an H being a house. a V being vacant or an H being a house. So I feel like, you know, I'm not saying that commercial will never go down that far, but in this case, the reason we're asking for this is to make a very nice entrance to a high-end residential subdivision, to put our entrance on Highway 57, and to feed back into the, to the big part of the subdivision.
Hey Bobby, is this, is this Old 57 or New 57?
Yes, it's Old 57. In fact, New 57, as you can see, it's right behind.
Right to my thought.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, this is Old Highway 57, so a lot of that traffic is going to be taken off of there eventually, you know, pretty soon now, so that's another plus.
You're not going to have an access point to New 57?
No, sir, no, no, there's, there's no access point to, that's allowed for that. So, but no, this will be, now, there's a secondary exit out, but there's, but the entrance into the subdivision will be off of Old 57. So after I made my presentation, and ask me anything, please, we're just trying to do seven lots, seven residential homes here, rather than doing commercial. The builder and the owner do not want to put strip centers in front of this, where it could be anything, basically. I've got a list of items, a list of things that could be put on this property, and it's just not that desirable. The homes would be a better fit for this, since we've already changed the character of the neighborhood by making the R1 behind it. So just a couple of other little things here. It was just told a couple of times, let's just stay on track with what's going on here. So I could feel the tension with the Planning Commission, they were just upset with the trees, and I really didn't think that that was fair on what I was trying to present here. No one spoke in opposition to this, I was, I made my presentation, and so it got down to making a motion, and they, they got to talking about spot zoning. This is not a spot zoning situation. It's, you know, in fact, we're adjacent to an existing R1 zoning, so it's an extension of R1 on this area. And if you're, if you're, yeah, still looking at this, the V in front of the yellow right there, this is, that's the same parcel we're looking at here. I just wanted to make a point, you know, Mr. Bodry, the owner, could really triple his money on selling these commercial parcels, but he opts to the character of the subdivision, making it very nice and having a nice front entry and that kind of thing, that's what he'd rather do, and he'd rather do this for the builder. Just look at the three acres right here, there is a change of character in the neighborhood, there is a need for, for housing, I mean, obviously, we're, we're trying to get this thing done, it's, I'm working with the JCUA to get these utilities correct, we got to get an M dot permit, I'm going through all that, I've actually got it. So we're ready to start construction on this thing, just in a few weeks, or maybe a month. But anyway, I'm here to answer any questions, I feel like we have proven there's a change of character, there's a need, I'm not sure about the mistake of, in the original zoning. I've got some, well, y'all see the maps here. This is like the very end, I think there's a break with some A1 and A2 on down south of here, and then it jumps back into commercial, but there's, this is at the very end of the commercial development of this area, I'm sorry.
Can I get to the areas so we can see?
Yeah, so that aerial kind of highlights what we're doing here. There's, up to the right there, there's some commercial, it's warehouses is what I see there, but, and then there's vacant, vacant lots or parcels, and then there are homes on the commercial. So anyway, I just wanted the opportunity to explain it to the, to the supervisors of what we were trying to do there. It got off track real quick because of the trees, I just felt like that wasn't, wasn't part of the application to go into that and then rule on this as a no because trees were cut. You know, we try to keep trees, that's understandable, there's no tree ordinance in Jackson County, we didn't cut all the trees, we had to cut some of them and got some people upset, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Hey Bobby, I couldn't see that planned too much, but, so do you have any de-acceleration and acceleration lanes coming off of Old 57 into that development?
I do not.
I, I'm going, you know, should it pass, I'm going to recommend that, you know, we do, because once that road, once the new Highway 57 is complete, Old 57 is going to revert to the county, and of course, there'll still be some state aid to help us keep it up, but it's going to revert to the county. So I would love to see, you've got enough room there, I would love to see some de-acceleration and acceleration lanes on each side of that entrance, you've got enough room to do that so that we don't have a traffic issue down the road, people trying to get in and out.
I do not see a problem with that.
You have a problem with that being part of stipulation if we do pass it?
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
I say you have a problem with that being part of the stipulation if we do pass what you need?
If it's in the minutes, and I say it's going to do, then it'll happen.
Okay.
All right, that's all I got for that, yeah.
Could, could you read, please, sir, the, the motion and any discussion they had either before or after the discussion?
Yes, sir.
What the Planning Commission had to say?
I don't know, it might be a way off track, sounds like.
I ask that because we, we did not get the packet to look at in advance.
Well, maybe I should have read all this, it was just mainly about stuff, it was just stuff thrown out all over the place.
That's what the.
Was it an unanimous vote, or was it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It sounded like they got way off track too, Bill. Read it to everyone if y'all.
Normally, we're doing the opposite, we're trying to keep commercial from coming into the interest of the neighborhood.
Well, that's another, that's another concern there, I mean, normally, I'll come up and say, look, we're not building any houses there, could we build a 7-Eleven there? You know, that's, that's usually the argument, to come in and downzone something like this ought to not, I mean, I'm, I'm like, you know what I'm talking about.
Okay, just to read this, Mr. Taylor asked us to read it, when it got to the point where they're asking if anybody wants to speak for or against this, of course, there was not anyone to speak for or against it, and.
There we go, yeah, okay.
Mr. Brewer said he was ready for a motion, and Ms. Pittman says, all right, go ahead, Mr. Brewer said, I recommend denial for a zone change, and he wrote out the zone change number from C2 Community Commercial to R1 Single Family. The basis for the recommendations, I feel like the character of the neighborhood has not changed to such an extent to justify rezoning, and a public need, and a public need exists for a rezoning, evidence, by evidence submitted by this application. George Shaw seconded the recommendation, Ms. Pittman said, all right, we have a motion for denial, we have a second from Mr. Shaw, and they went through and voted unanimously, and that was the end of that prior to it.
Now, we're talking about spot zoning, and this is nowhere near spot zoning, I mean, it's, you can't call that spot zoning, it's adjacent to an existing zone.
Spot zoning would have been when that planned unit development would have, was, was approved a long time ago, I wasn't even in office when that was approved, so that, that's spot zoning, if you ask me, so, but.
Okay, Ms. Pittman said, so change in the character of the neighborhood, and Mr. Shaw said, if the neighborhood is Highway 57, I don't see a change. Mr. Brewer said, and that's what I, that's what it is. Ms. Pittman said, a what need, question mark, and I said, public need. Ms. Pittman said, a public need, and I said, or four was there a safety in the original zoning? Dr. Knight said, Marcus, I have a question, if it stayed commercial, could they still put the entrance going into the subdivision? Of course, I told him, yes, it could, it just couldn't be residential homes built there. And Ms. Pittman said, man, what a pickle. Mr. Shaw says, so a way to do that would be to perhaps put a buffer along the road to prevent driving through a car wash or something like that? I'm just hesitant to say we, we couldn't change anything along Highway 57 to residential, that does not seem like a good idea to me. And Mr. Brewer said, it would be the same on Cook Road. Ms. Pittman said, how many years it takes to get that from residential to commercial? Okay, Mr. Shaw said, exactly. And Ms. Pittman said, do we have any questions for the applicant? And they had no questions, so that's when they went to the.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Well, Cook Road, I actually have a project on Cook Road, I mean, yeah, that was residential, and y'all changed it to commercial, well, this is the opposite, so I don't even know why that comment was even made. But, and I'm not building houses on Highway 57, we're building an entrance here, a nice entrance off of Old 57, and feeding in here, these houses will not be facing Highway 57. In fact, I mean, I would go as far as a nice, you know, fenced entryway right here is what the, the plan is, and so that's, that's all I got to say about it. I just feel like it got off track real quick about trees and not really looking at what my request was.
I mean, this lines up with what we've done in several other neighborhoods that were the exact opposite, where the neighborhood didn't want something commercial coming in into their entryway that came into their neighborhood, and we had to go the opposite direction.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't want to offend anybody, but a couple things, check cashing facilities, convenience stores, flea markets, you could put a hotel right there, you could do cannabis dispensaries, mini warehouses, liquor stores, a seafood market, a used car sales, and a car wash. That's what we don't want going into a very nice subdivision.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak for this appeal? Is there any, go ahead.
You know, I don't know the, Amy Mahiedon, 12.
Give us your name and address.
Yeah, Amy Mahiedon, my office at 1219 Monticello Boulevard. I don't know the applicant, but I'd like to, like to speak in favor of the applicant and actually reverse the Planning Commission's decision. The legal threshold for spot zoning is, is defined by our Supreme Court as a, a land use intensity that is intense surrounded by a less intense use. So just based on the map, because it is already near an R1 area, it's, it cannot be spot zoning, that, that's, that's, that's the, so just on the basis of that, that would be the reversal of the Planning Commission's recommendation, and number two, you know, it once again, you know, because it's close to an R1 area, it does meet the threshold for a change in the character of the neighborhood. You know, if it has been rezoned in the last couple of years, that, that would meet the legal threshold. So I don't know the applicant, I don't know the developer, but if we just stick to what is the controlling law, the, the facts of the case do tend to be on the applicant's side, so I have no financial interest in, in this, this stake, but, you know, if we just stick to what the basis of the, the facts and law are, the, the facts and law are on the applicant's side, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for it? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, thank you, sir. Anything else you would like to say before we make our decision?
I appreciate your last comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know any, but I appreciate that you should have given it.
Will you pull up that other slide? Okay.
This one here?
Yeah, so based on that planned unit development that was approved 20 years ago that I remember, I wasn't on this board when that happened, that changed the character of the neighborhood right there, because as most people know, a planned unit development is a, is a mixture of multifamily, residential, commercial, you know, so the character of the neighborhood was changed when that was approved, right?
Well, the character was also changed when this was rezoned to R1.
And when that was rezoned, I was just fixing to say, when that was rezoned to R1, the, the character of the neighborhood, in my experience, has been, has been changed.
I don't want to make his case for him, but, you know.
Well, no, the, the case makes itself, so, but I do know the owners of that unit development, they're actively marketing that for multifamily and a residential component, so, matter of fact, they, last time I talked to them several months ago, they, they might have a customer, so, or a builder that wants to come in. And I've heard from three different people that live around this proposed area, and all three of them said they don't have a problem with it. So in fact, they encouraged me to, to do the residential and not the commercial, because they don't want to hear any, any commercial stuff. So I'm going to make a motion to overturn the Planning Commission's process and vote to approve that rezoning from commercial to residential. The only thing I'm going to add, Bobby, is that before you get totally approved for construction, those de-acceleration and acceleration lanes need to be complete and in, no matter if we own 57 or not by then, so that's, I'm going to make that adjustment, Marcus, in this, in this approval. So that's, that's my motion.
All right.
I'll say. How would that work internally with you on the acceleration, deceleration lanes?
It wouldn't for, with me, that would be something that Joe would have to work out with him.
Yeah.
Have to be built to county standards?
Yeah.
He would just have to get with the road department on that, unless you were asking for a traffic study or something like that.
We don't need a traffic study.
Stephanie and Mr. Taylor seconded it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Very good. You're good to go.
Thank you very much.
That brings us down to closed session, to see if there's sufficient evidence for executive session.
Mr. Cummins, I think the only thing is the pending litigation for the Pasquagoula annexation case that is currently pending in Jackson County Chancery Court, and I wanted to discuss an issue with regard to that litigation with the board.
Okay, sounds good. I accept the motion to go in for those items and the closed determination.
Mr. Moore?
Was that you or Randy?
He may, I'll second.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Bossar, the second by Mr. Ross, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right.